Hello and welcome to another School Committee update. I'm your host today, standing in for Sarah. I'm Tony Martinez and we're joined today with Eleanor.
Hi, Tony.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How about you?
Good. We were just talking about the seasons changing and you're okay with it being a little colder and now warmer all of a sudden.
I am. The unseasonable warmth, of course, like makes me worry a little bit about where our climate is headed. But I do like the colder days of the fall.
And I think that was the hardest topic we had to talk about. The rest should be easier from down here. So we got the hard part over with, but thank you. This isn't your first time joining us with the School Committee. You joined us during COVID virtually, which was a whole different session altogether. So welcome to our studio. We just have a range of things we'd love to talk about today. Starting with, I think, you know, in your running for School Committee, there's a journey there. If you had to sort of break it down, what led you to wanting to be part of the School Committee? How could you condense that for viewers?
Sure. The simplest response is that people asked me to. That's the honest response. When my predecessor Paulo O'Sullivan decided not to run again, a few people reached out and asked what I thought about serving on School Committee. I think it seemed like a logical next step in a trajectory of sort of community involvement. So I had served on the Summer Village Soccer Board and as a coach. I had been on the PTA at the Brown School. And it, I guess, seemed to others and to myself that this would be a logical next step in sort of supporting the community and helping to make Somerville a great place to live for everybody here.
Yeah, what kinds of qualities being honed and then being brought into the role? Did you see in these smaller leadership examples, being on soccer teams, being involved elsewhere, helping you? Or did it feel like just diving in and seeing how it works out from there?
I think those prior involvements in the community helped in a few ways. One is just I knew more people in the community than I might have otherwise. You know, if I had, you know, been a parent, my circles, I mean, as a parent, my circles would have been a certain way. But then being involved with the Youth Soccer Board sort of expanded those circles or introduced me to new circles. And similarly with the PTA. The PTA involvement also, when you're on, when you're an officer on the PTA, you participate in PTA Council, which is a monthly meeting of all the PTAs across the district, which is somewhat unique to Somerville. And in doing that, I think I got to know and understand the other schools in the district in a way that I might not have as a parent or as, you know, a parent who wasn't on the PTA. And sort of understand the challenges that different schools or the district faces in a different way, if that makes sense.
Yeah, those challenges, you would get to hear them in your own home, right? As a parent, from student perspective, but also your child's perspective? What are some examples, anything that comes directly to mind?
I mean, as a parent, I guess, I would hear about my own kids', you know, frustrations and joys in the classroom. And I mean, at the Brown School, you would also hear about frustrations with, for example, the outside play space, which we heard about from parents as well. But then when we were, as a PTA officer and in the PTA Council, one of the things that we did every year was go before or have a meeting with School Committee and talk about the needs of our individual schools. So I could hear from other schools about space constraints or funding for field trips that, you know, might be a challenge. Or I'm trying to think, the outdoor play space at the Brown School. That's not the only school that, you know, had asked for upgrades to outdoor play space and things like that. So it just sort of expanded my understanding of the schools throughout the city that I might not have had as much exposure to if I hadn't had the experience of being on the PTA.
And that's a nice jump off point to the Brown School, the Winter Hill School. As far as reopening and funding to sort of remodel and repair. Being on the School Committee, that must be a conversation you hear a lot or you have to filter a lot of questions about.
Sure, yeah. I mean, people in the community are really engaged about, particularly families who have kids at the Brown School or the Winter Hill School, I think, are very engaged in the conversation about how we're going to reopen a Winter Hill School, whether that reopening is going to include the Brown School or not, and what the needs of the community are with respect to those things.
Yeah, and as far as tracking the timeline with what's in place, things feel really confident right now?
I mean, I feel very confident in the sense that the district and the city have been really diligent about completing all of their required documentation and all the steps that the Massachusetts School Building Authority, also known as the MSBA, asks for from cities and districts. So we've just completed the last requirement of the first stage in the MSBA process, the eligibility stage. And we're waiting to find out if we'll be invited by the MSBA to participate in the feasibility stage. So I guess I'm confident in all that we've done so far, but completing the eligibility stage isn't a guarantee that you'll be invited to the feasibility stage. I'm certainly hopeful and I believe that that the needs of our community are being acknowledged by the MSBA and understood by the MSBA. So I feel good that we're going to be invited, but it's not a guarantee. So there's always that like concern.
Yeah, and for those not familiar with the MSBA, can you walk us through the stages? Yeah, and maybe the success rate to progress through those stages?
I don't know the success rate. I can certainly, what I can tell you is that we've completed the eligibility phase. I think we have until the end of this month technically, but we've completed all the, or the end of November, actually. It's not quite November, right? So we've completed all the things that we need to do. And the next stage is the feasibility stage, at which point, you know, you sort of go through, is it in fact feasible to do all the things that the district wants to do? And what is it the district and city want from a new building?
Yeah, thanks for walking me through that. I mean, I feel like filtering, again, those questions from parents. You know, I think there's just general concerns with like the idea of it reopening and meeting a sort of timeline. When you're addressing parents, that must take a place of empathy for you, but then also just sort of understanding where you are in the process. Is it easy to sort of answer those questions? Do you find it challenging to sort of take on their perspective and give answers back?
I think it's certainly easy to hear their perspectives and their feedback and their concerns. It's not always easy to respond as far as, you know, when is this going to happen? When will we know? Those are the questions that are much harder to answer. And I think that that, it's challenging. It's uncomfortable not to not be able to give folks the information that they want because we simply don't know it yet. And a lot of the decision making about the next steps, it doesn't lie with the School Committee, it lies with the mayor. She's recruited the folks to serve on the Community Advisory Group to help gather community input about those next steps and to make a recommendation to her about what this new school should be and whether it should comprise, you know, the Brown School and the Winter Hill School, where that building might land. But we don't have firm dates of a decision will be made on this date and construction will begin on this date. And that's hard.
Exactly, yeah. No, yeah, thanks for tackling these. I feel like it just seems seasonally tough for parents right now with other concerns, namely question two on the ballot, which is something I'd love to unpack with you. It seems a little divisive in that you will just have two different camps for yes and no, as you do many ballot questions. What are the pros and cons that you could just sort of lightly provide in either way? In either result for voting yes or no to this question?
Yeah, so School Committee voted to support question two in, you know, the idea of removing MCAS as a requirement to graduate from high school. And, you know, some of the reasons behind that are that that in general, standardized testing is not always the best method of evaluating, you know, a student's knowledge or skills. They also, studies have shown that standardized tests are, they tend to be to the advantage of students from a higher socioeconomic background. They correlate really strongly with socioeconomic status. So I think there's concern that it's putting folks who are already at disadvantages, you know, at a further disadvantage to say, you know, you have to pass this test, which is already stacked against you to graduate from high school, which is limiting your opportunities in the future, right? It also, there's also a concern that it limits or it sort of prescribes what a teacher is going to teach to students because the concern is you have to pass this test, not you have to learn these these things that we think are going to best prepare you for your future after high school. So those are some of the reasons why School Committee voted to support the removal of the MCAS as a graduation requirement. I've heard folks say that it doesn't, that without that requirement, there isn't a statewide standard for graduation. We can establish new standards, new statewide standards that aren't necessarily the MCAS. We can also, Somerville High School has, you know, rigorous standards. Other high schools have rigorous standards for what makes a person ready to graduate, graduate from high school. And it doesn't have to be sort of punitive in this way. So I guess we're hoping that removing that MCAS requirement will improve opportunities for equity in those standards for graduation. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, no, completely. I mean, was that something of a passionate source for you to tackle as a School Committee? This was a question that did carry a lot of weight in decision making and thinking about those pros and cons.
I think, I think it was, there wasn't a lot of discussion about it. I think that most of us felt pretty firmly that this is the right thing to do.
Yeah, I come from a state and certainly with my own experiences of standardized testing not going very well, it does seem to be like a very strict standard that when not passed or passed successfully, it limits your future in some way. And yeah, I don't know, I just look back to my own standardized test scores and I'm like, I'm very glad that that did not hold me back in life, but there is a fear that it could.
There's also that aspect, you know, the anxiety and stress that these standardized tests can cause students. And that can also impact performance, right? If you're, if you're experiencing a lot of stress while you're taking the test, knowing how much is riding on it, it sets students up for, some students, not all of course, but it sets some students up for for an outcome that doesn't adequately reflect or adequately isn't the word I'm looking for, but doesn't accurately, there it is, reflect the student's abilities and knowledge.
Right, right. Tough time to be a student too, I suppose, in those, in that manner of just looking at some of the issues. One of the things I think Somerville's done a good job with is looking at inclusiveness, studying it, seeing the impacts of diversity, and then holding classrooms and teachers accountable to sort of have well-equipped standards for all kinds of students. That's something we've had a discussion with other School Committee members. What are some ways you've seen success in inclusiveness in classrooms, particularly with the impact of like technology and equipping students?
It's an interesting question. I think, I mean, it sounds like what you're talking about is differentiation, right? So how does a teacher teach to the various needs and abilities in a classroom and interests? And I think that it's hard. It's always, it's been a challenge, I think, throughout my time on School Committee. And I think in a district as diverse as Somerville and coming out of COVID, where students had very different learning experiences during COVID. You know, the district did as, I think, as much as any district could to ensure that students had access to resources and things like that. But every student had a different environment that they were learning in, you know, because they were in their homes. So I think that the diversity of needs and abilities now is as great or greater than it has been. And so teachers are trying to meet that. So some of the things that the district is doing, providing coaching and mentoring in math, in equity, various areas. iReady is a new assessment tool that the district is using, which is a more, it's a, it's a test, but it's more immediate. One of the things about MCAS is that, you know, you take, a student takes the test in the spring and then the scores come in in the fall. So teachers can't respond to it immediately or as immediately. Whereas iReady provides the teachers with more immediate feedback and they can adjust their lessons and their, their planning and their individualization more, in a more timely manner, so that they can provide students sort of with what they need right now, the interventions they need right now.
Right.
I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, completely, completely. I guess the reason I asked that and spoken with another School Committee member as well, just on the impact of technology today, it just seems ever-changing, which has been the name of the game of technology. But in equipping students with either additional resources or additional distractions or just having a role in the lives of students really is paving a way for an experience that future or previous generations really have not had a real grasp with. I mean, I can remember being in the earliest wave of using computers in classrooms and enjoying that experience. And it's at a whole new level now where it's hard to know what is resourceful versus distractionary? That's not the word, but is playing a role in the opposite direction of attention.
Right.
And that must be, that must be important and difficult to manage, I imagine, on a School Committee.
Yeah, so it's interesting, you know, I think cell phones are certainly an example of things that can be distracting, right? And this year, the high school, they haven't really changed their policy on, on cell phones, but they're enforcing it more. And so students are really not using their cell phones in the classroom. And what I've heard from educators and administrators is that it's really making a difference in the level of engagement that they're seeing. Not just students engaging with what their teacher is saying, but also with the way they engage with each other, which is great. Also, you know, something that we, that, so I'm the Chair of the Rules Subcommittee, which writes policy, revises policy, things like that. And something that is coming up for us from a policy standpoint potentially is, you know, how are we, how are we, what's the word I'm looking for, approaching AI? And, you know, how are we directing students to use in a constructive manner AI?
Right, right.
But obviously not use it for plagiarism, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I feel like that conversation, it's hard to know what stage it's at because AI in terms of like ChatGPT or, you know, as an early example, is just so powerful and accessible. And then kind of fast, it's instant homework. I'm sure that that's been a conversation on the binds of parents and teachers and in very personal settings in classrooms about maybe teachers leading a conversation or beginning a classroom lecture about this tool in particular. Do you have any sort of landscape and thinking what it might look like in the role of classrooms, given some more time and use?
So last year at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference, which happens next week, so about a year ago, one of the speakers there was a professor, I think, at MIT. And he had written a book, has written a book about AI and sort of how it works. And, and he talked about how it can be used in a classroom or how you can, how you can use it in the classroom to demonstrate to students that it isn't, it isn't going to make you a more successful student to use it, you know, irresponsibly, I guess. I think he talked about a study where students compared essays that were either, you know, written by ChatGPT or they used ChatGPT to write the initial draft and then they wrote their, then they modified it themselves. Or they wrote the essay and then they used ChatGPT to revise it, or they just wrote it themselves. And then students scored those essays. And lo and behold, the essays that were written by students scored better than the essays that were written by ChatGPT or even revised by ChatGPT. So that was, I think, interesting and, you know, could be a powerful illustration for students sort of about like whether it's to your benefit to use it. And I don't know, I don't know where else I was going to go.
Yeah, no, no, completely, completely. Yeah, there's, there's, that's a really interesting story. And also I wouldn't have thought students would be able to identify their own works to say this is the better work than what we're seeing this tool, which would kind of equip us to think, oh, this is the better tool. This is the more, maybe more original and instantaneous source of all kinds of ideas I didn't have time to think of. And yet students are getting their own scores and giving them back to each other, which is, that's a great success. Valuable story. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, sure.
We've hit a lot of things today. In terms about your involvement, again, in addition to Somerville and being a part of the School Committee, you seem to have an organization that you support and that you're very passionate about. And I'd love to hear more about the Somerville Homeless Coalition, your role in that and anything you'd like to share. I feel like that's all, we could have a whole discussion on that.
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, my, my support or involvement of the Somerville Homeless Coalition is definitely predates my time on School Committee. You know, some friends said, oh, we're going to this event. Do you guys want to come? I mean, that was probably like 15 years ago. So we started out as just, you know, attendees at the annual fundraiser. My husband and myself with a number of friends. And it turned out, you know, that there were folks that I didn't realize were, you know, longtime supporters that I knew. And so it felt like, oh, my community is already here, you know?
Right.
And so over the years, I guess, my support for the organization sort of grew. They do a 5K every fall. I'm a runner, so I naturally participated in that. And it's a fundraising opportunity. So a couple of times I've, I've really tried to raise, you know, a certain amount for, for the Homeless Coalition at that event. And then I guess, I think as a School Committee member, you know, and as I mentioned on the PTA and whatnot, I've come to understand how housing stability, having a home, a home you can rely on, impacts our students and their families. You know, there's, there is a fair amount of movement in and out of Somerville because of scarcity of housing and the expensive housing and things like that. And when students have to change schools, it impacts their opportunities, right? Curriculum changes, their connections with caring adults change, their connections with friends change. Of course, it's also just stressful, right, to change schools and things like that. So the Homeless Coalition doesn't just serve folks who are without a home. It also helps prevent eviction, provide access to food and other services. Obviously, food is very important to students in their learning. I also worked for Food for Free. I don't know if you know that.
No, I haven't heard of that program. Oh, that's great.
So I worked for Food for Free several years ago. On their, I was their Somerville Backpack Program Coordinator. And the Backpack Program sent food home on the weekends with students who typically would, would depend on free and reduced lunch during the week. So, you know, that was just another sort of window into where the needs are in Somerville.
Yeah.
So Somerville Homeless Coalition has Project Soup, which is their food pantry in East Somerville. So I guess it's just sort of, there's a synergy there, I guess, between the work that I was doing at Food for Free and the work that Somerville Homeless Coalition does and, and my work on the School Committee to some degree, just in supporting students through supporting the whole family.
Yeah, and identifying needs within different settings.
Right, yeah.
That's valuable.
So the Somerville Homeless Coalition did, eventually, they got a bib for the Boston Marathon a couple of years ago, a charity bib, and they needed a runner. And I was able to do that.
Oh, fantastic.
I, I was in a position to, to train and to raise the money that they, that they needed to support the bib. And, and that felt really good. So then I did it again the next year. And yeah, it's, it's just great to know that I'm supporting an organization that really has compassionate employees on the ground, supporting folks every day and treating people with the dignity and respect that everyone deserves.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's a very valuable amount of time you've dedicated to such an incredible organization as well. And no doubt from what you've mentioned, that's affecting your role in the School Committee, just as you said, identifying needs and serving them where you can. Do you see the opportunity for a lot of kids to volunteer into these kinds of organizations? Is that something you've been excited to encourage as well in the time you've spent with these, these kinds of groups?
It's an interesting question. I actually don't know what ages are able to volunteer with the Somerville Homeless Coalition or with Food for Free. I think some opportunities are available for, for kids over 16 and then other opportunities if you're participating with a parent. I do know that some of the schools, well, at least one school, their PTA does a gift drive, you know, around the holidays to provide gifts to children and families in need. And that's coordinated through the Somerville Homeless Coalition. So that's, you know, one avenue of involvement, I suppose.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going through the list of the things we've discussed. Your involvement with these groups, learning you're a Boston Marathon runner, which is fantastic. And then being on the School Committee and a parent as well, you have a lot of diverse experiences. Do you see that shaping your continued role in identifying needs in Somerville? Are there other avenues you think about, oh, well, maybe there's other needs here I could be exploring? Do you have those kinds of thoughts about?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, my experiences have broadened my circles in Somerville that I, as a, well, as a person who lives on the west side of Somerville, a person with my education and background, a person who mostly speaks English. I mean, you know, I have very limited Spanish. I don't speak Portuguese at all. I speak Italian and French, which isn't particularly useful in these ways. But there are just, you know, parts of the community that I don't access. And I don't want to say I don't have access to, because that's not fair. But it's more challenging. So there's definitely need in the community that I don't see firsthand or that I don't, that I don't necessarily, or that I have a harder time communicating with people about. And that's something that I think is mostly on me, I suppose. I could do a better job of connecting with, with different parts of the community that I have not yet connected with. And so I'm definitely interested in sort of thinking about how I could expand my involvement, how I can connect with different parts of the community, different organizations that would give me a better window on those needs.
You're setting a great example, I think.
I'm trying.
Looking for new ways to be involved and to make waves and impact in the community is just so valuable. So thank you for sharing in all of these ways you've done that. We're coming close to the end of our time here. We've hit a lot of things. Is there any kind of guiding message, anything you'd like to leave our viewers with in our last School Committee update?
Sure, I mean, and I mean, I guess this is maybe a little bit self-indulgent maybe, but I think my experience on School Committee, you know, I'm almost at the end of my fifth year. I just feel so grateful to have the caring and intelligent colleagues that I am on School Committee. To be able to work with those folks on this, in this journey has been really wonderful. And also to know that I'm working for a district with just incredibly dedicated and talented staff, you know, from the educators. you know, from the educators to the administrators, the cafeteria workers. Everyone is really committed to helping our students have the best experience and become, you know, the, or reach a level of, the level of achievement that they can. And I really do believe that really everyone who works in Somerville Public Schools is there to serve the students.
Yeah. Well, I want to thank you again for your time today. This was a wonderful opportunity to meet you. And to our viewers joining, that's another update of our school committee. Have a great rest of your day. Take care.